Let's, an L M C T V, it has to be hooked up. And let's see if John is around. Make sure John's not in the waiting room. I don't see him. All right, you guys keep an eye out for John.
Okay, the.
Yeah.
Can you turn on your. We'll keep an eye out for John.
Do we have a new village engineer? Because we have.
We do.
Both of these applications for the new engineer.
Yes.
Okay.
Hello?
Hello, hi, welcome.
Hey.
Esteban, can you tell us who you are?
Sorry, my name is Esteban Garcia. I work for Color Sessions.
Oh, okay.
Replacing on Brian's, Brian held the brands replacement.
So you're the new consulting engineer?
Yeah, yeah, look, we're working alongside with Joe Tramelli over here at K A C.
Hey, welcome.
Thank you.
All right, I wanted to introduce Teresa. For those of you who are watching, we see Teresa's name. Teresa is our new land use attorney. I think everybody else we know. Okay, it's, are we up and we're live and we're good? It's 7:02. I guess John will join us when he can. I'll call the.
I see John.
You see John? There he is, okay. Okay. John, turn your video on. You just missed the introductions. Teresa Backner is our new land use attorney and Esteban Garcia is our new consulting engineer. And. You weren't at the last meeting. Were you at the last meeting? No. Ellen Styler is our more, most recent planning board member. Can you hear us, John? Doesn't look like it.
Hey, Cook, where's Charlie?
Charlie?
Charlie's the land use attorney for the other.
I've got to find my microphone.
Or, or it could be a child that will help.
Get Charlie over here.
Charlie?
Oh, Charlie, yes. Is your tech consultant? Having trouble logging on, he can't hear us. So we'll let John fix it and let's move on to the. Okay, first item on the agenda is approval of minutes. The September 23rd minutes are being held over to the next meeting.
Charlie, get me on, I can't, I can't hear a thing. When I came on, it said Charlie.
Mute yourself.
He can't hear. Call him or text him?
I, I have his text. I don't know if anybody else does.
Because I think he has the same problem I did. I'm guessing. Because you could hear me and I couldn't hear you.
All right, I just texted. Oh, he did, he muted himself. Okay. So we have the minutes in front of us from the October 14th to the 2020 meeting. Does anybody have any comments? Ellen, obviously you weren't here.
Right.
So like last time, you'll have to abstain from voting. So that leaves the three of us.
I, I had one thing on page three.
Okay.
In the middle of the page, Chair Sable. In the whereas clause, I think the A should not be capitalized, but more importantly, I had to read it three times to understand what we were saying. So I think.
I had to go back to my notes to find to understand what we were saying, right?
So I think we, if we just put change may, the word may in quotes no longer be valid to will, put that in quotes.
There doesn't need quotes on it, yeah.
Right, right, just because it didn't make any sense to me otherwise.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good.
Pull out the file, which is in storage because it's closed, to find out what it was. Because it's so long ago, we don't remember.
That was all I had.
Okay, does anybody, Richard, do you have anything?
No.
No, I don't have anything else. That was all I had too. So I need a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I guess we'll do a voice vote. John, you're still not with us, no. John, are you?
You hear me?
Yes, we have a motion on the table to approve the minutes of October 14th. We did a minor amendment of adding some quotation marks. So I'm going to just call the vote. Cindy?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
John?
I don't believe I was present.
You're right, you weren't. So you're going to abstain from the vote?
Yes.
And Ellen? You'll abstain as well?
Right, I'll abstain.
And, and I vote yes, okay. That brings us to the first item on the agenda. We have two new applications for site plan review tonight. First one is for a swimming pool, an in-ground swimming pool at 1035 Nine Acres Lane. So we'll need to promote. Anyone who's here to speak. On this application.
If you could please raise your hand in the chat sign of, thank you.
Hi, my name is Barack Clarkfield. I'm the homeowner and we have Rob on as well. He's our engineer and Mariana is the pool company.
I'm sorry, oh, the pool company. Okay, thank you. Who will be speaking for, for this application?
Hi, this is Rob Frangione. I'll be speaking on the application. For the record, Rob Frangione, Frangione Engineering, Licensed Professional Engineer in New York, representing Barack Clarkfield. The property is currently improved by a single-family house driveway and deck. Anyone who proposes building an in-ground swimming pool in the rear yard. The pool complies with all zoning setbacks and coverage limits. We've prepared a stormwater pollution prevention plan to mitigate runoff from the one through 100-year storms as well as the water quality volumes. And that's our sheets S1 and S2 that were submitted as part of this application. The increase in coverage is about 1,030 square feet. And we are still well below allowable, we're about 1,827 square feet under allowable coverage, so we're good there. As far as screening goes, the property already has ample screening on the sides and rear property lines. On the left-hand side, there's a solid PVC fence owned by the neighbor. So it's the neighbor's fence that's screening from them. And then on the right and rear yard sides, there's evergreen, rows of evergreens that are screening both, both sides. So in short, the proposal complies with the section 300 of the Village of Marinerneck zoning code. Will not have an adverse impact from stormwater on adjacent properties. And will be adequately screened from the neighbors. We therefore ask for your approval tonight. It's a very straightforward application. It's a pool. And I'm here to answer any questions should you have them.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? The applicant's team or our consultants? We have with us Esteban Garcia, who is the Planning Board's Consulting Engineer.
Hello.
Well, I guess, I guess my question is, does this application require a SWIP? We're doing a, it is a site plan, right?
Well, that's what my site plan is. It is a stormwater pollution prevention plan. There was a drainage report that went along with it. We're proposing subsurface cultic units to detain the increase in runoff. So if that's what you mean by that question.
Well, I guess we're used to seeing SWIPs that are much lengthier, so I. It seems to be a drainage plan and, and it seemed to have certain elements to it, but I certainly, you know, would, would rely on our consulting engineer to, you know, opine whether or not this, you know, it has all the elements of a SWIP regardless of what we call it. So I, I've just, as I said, we usually get booklets, not that I'm looking for more information, but.
And that's probably because they're a lot more complicated projects, you know, with severe runoff issues. Again, this is a swimming pool.
I, I understand. I just want to make sure that we have whatever we're supposed to have and the, and our professionals have, have reviewed it and told us that it's what's appropriate and effective.
Yeah, we usually, we usually get a report in writing from a consulting engineer on things like this. This is the beginning of a new year, not just a calendar year, but a new year for the village. So we have some new staff people with us.
And I do want to clarify that Esteban did, did make clear that they were having technical difficulties in the office, which did delay the actual reports for tonight's meeting. So moving forward, this should be.
So there, there actually is a report on its way. Esteban, do you want to fill us in on what it might say?
So just, just filling in, I think it's just going to comment a lot on the stormwater aspects of the project. I think we received this last week. Again, as, as Amber reiterated, we did have some technical difficulties in my office. So it prevented us from, from getting the report out to you guys. We usually submit it the day before prior to the actual planning board meeting, so it gives the applicant a chance to, to review any comments if it's submitted to them. In terms of the stormwater aspect, Frank, you, on your, on your plan, you called out a future patio. Is that part of, is it going to be part of the construction of the pool or is it going to be constructed like in the future application?
My understanding is it's, it's for the future and so we kind of have it there just to show it. And the problem with doing stormwater plans for pools is pools don't generate runoff.
Yeah.
You know, that's the, so we, it was better for us to actually have a patio there so we could have something to drain. You know, we're going to have a slot drain at the end of the patio. We're also going to have a yard drain in the yard and that'll collect the runoff from the surrounding area and send it into the cul-de-sac contactor field grins.
I think I still, I think after this meeting, we're, we're, we are planning to still submit a full-fledged report or a full-fledged memorandum of our, our, our stormwater comments. Following, following this meeting, I still have to coordinate with Joe in my office to finalize that memo. So we'll probably, once we're up and running again in terms of our systems, we will definitely get that out to you in the, in the next, in the coming days.
Is it possible to move forward and just as a condition of the approval, comply with the consulting engineer's memo?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask. Okay. So it doesn't sound like you have any issues with the drainage summary report. And from a building inspector point of view, that's sufficient for the requirements? Because usually, as, as Ms. Goldstein said, with a site plan, we usually get a much meatier SWIP. But if there's nothing here to drain, it's a pool. This is the first time we've done just a pool. We've done pools as part of other projects, but this is the first time we've done just a pool.
Right, yeah. I, I usually do much larger drainage.
Right. Bear with us as we kind of figure it out. You'll figure it out.
I have another question, since you described the screening on one side was the neighbor's fence.
Right.
Means the neighbor could take out the fence and then you have no screening. I, not that I'm looking to have two screens, but if it's the neighbor's fence, they can remove it.
They could.
They have no fence.
Right, and then they'd be looking at the swimming pool. So I, I don't know if they'd want, I mean, if they want to do that, then.
No, I'm not, well, there may be other people who, if they took out the fence, then would be looking at the swimming pool.
All right, if I can just, if I can just add that neighbor's fence is actually screening their pool.
Oh, so they need the fence.
I'm, you know, I'm just trying to look down the road. If this is a requirement and you're relying on someone else's improvement to comply with village code, we can't tie that person up and make sure they always have it there. I'm just trying to make sure that we've, we've met the, the spirit and, and the letter of the law.
I understand the concern and, and I, and I think, given the fact that there is a pool next door, that the screening, you know, is there. You know, having it planting trees in front of a fence that, you know, who is it screening? It just, it just doesn't seem like a, like a reason to need to do.
I get that. And you have another safety fence around the pool itself. We're just talking about the screening for the visual impact.
Correct, correct.
Visual and noise. Cindy, you have any other questions?
Um, I just wanted to ask, I guess Frank, what are the notice requirements for a swimming pool? I mean, all, I'm sure all the neighbors within a radius got notification or maybe Amber, that's your question, not sure. I'm just wondering.
The applicant sent out to all the neighboring properties within 200-foot radius around the property and we've received documentation for that.
Great, thank you.
There's also sign posting.
Yep.
All right, I have a couple of questions that relate to neighbors and chapter 300. Are you planning on putting any lighting around the pool to be used so you can use it at night? And if so, we're going to need to see detail about that.
I don't believe Barack, is it there's no lighting, right?
There's no lighting outside of the pool. There's lighting inside the pool and it's part of the plans that we submitted.
Right, we saw that. But you're not planning on putting in lighting to light the pool? What about, and this isn't part of the code, but as somebody who lives very close to somebody's pool, putting a sound system and every time they turn it on, my house reverberates with bass. Are you putting in a sound system?
We are not.
Okay, I think your neighbors will appreciate that. The equipment shed is going towards the front of the house. It appeared, now I looked at the photographs of the front of the house and you have some mature plantings there at, at this time, from what I can see. So those are probably going to have to be removed to put the equipment in or, so how are you going to screen the equipment?
So the equipment is like, the house is not exactly flush. It's like recessed a little and there is a.
I'm looking at.
There's a row of hedges that currently completely screens a generator. And we're going to put the equipment right next to that generator. You know, behind the same hedges.
Okay, oh, so you don't have to remove those hedges?
No.
Okay, so you're, you're able to put it in, it'll fit right in. Okay, I thought you would probably, to get in there and whatnot, you'd have to remove the vegetation. Okay. Let's see, sound equipment sheds screening, those were my questions. Anybody else have any questions?
Not for me.
Yes, go ahead, Ashley.
All right, I did notice that you, you provided all the coverage calculations, but there was a requirement in chapter 300 for calculating the coverage based on the rear yard area as a percentage. Did you happen to run that calculation just on the rear yard?
Hmm. No, I have not, not that I can tell. I just did total coverages.
So it's, it's 300 dash 3C. No pool shall occupy more than 40% of the area of the rear yard exclusive of all garages or other accessory structures located in such area. So, so that calculation just needs to be provided.
Okay. We can certainly provide that. I mean, just looking at the site plan, there's no way it's 40% of the rear yard, so, but we can certainly provide that number.
And what's the process with the special permit from the zoning board? So you were with us first and then it goes to the zoning board?
I believe they were with architectural review at first.
So this application was one that came in a while ago, several months ago, I believe. And they first went to Board of Architectural Review before necessarily my tenure here. And so moving forward, applications would primarily go forward to the planning board first and then proceed on to additional boards from here on out.
Okay, because I see the, the checklist is showing Z B A special permit under 342-49. So that would. The.
Right.
Summary sheet.
That, that's correct. So after further review of that section of the code, 342-49, the required, the additional requirements for swimming pools is listed in the special permit section of the code, which falls under the Z B A's jurisdiction. So I understand that it hasn't been processed this way in the past for swimming pools. But we, Teresa and I had a conversation about this and Teresa wants to jump in.
So does this mean they have to go to Z B A after this?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Wait, and so Amber, they've already been to B A R and they have B A R's approval already? Oh, okay, so we don't have to worry about them doing anything after we approve it, okay.
No, I'm just, I'm just wondering, is our action on this application dependent upon Z B A? Or is Z B A's action dependent upon our approval?
I, I think, I don't think they're, either is dependent on either. It's a special permit requirement from the zoning board of a field is not a variance. And then in terms of the planning board's jurisdiction, it's site plan review specific to the stormwater concerns.
I, I'm just trying to figure out if we need to act and do something tonight before Z B A can take this up or if we could actually wait to see our consulting engineers' commentary on their stormwater plan. I'm just trying to figure the most efficient way to move ahead.
Well, we're, we're still going to need to pass a resolution at our next meeting. We don't have a resolution prepared for.
Okay, okay. All right.
It is a type two action under secret, so both boards can act without waiting for the planning board to act first.
Okay, we actually have to, actually have to type it and we have to vote on that while we're here tonight. That's one thing we can do. I don't think anybody has any other questions or opposed. We just have to make sure we get all the paperwork done in the right order and in the right place. So we'll receive Esteban's report. We will draft a resolution. It'll be circulated to you before the next meeting. And I don't see any reason why we can't get this on the agenda for the next meeting, which is in two weeks.
Thank you.
It's not like you're going to go swimming.
I love a nice balmy 21-degree swim.
Does that sound about right? Okay, so I, we need a motion to type this as a type two action.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I'll call the roll. John?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Is that as far as we need to go then tonight? Is that, Ashley, Amber, this is, we accomplished what we could accomplish tonight? Okay.
Yes, and I, and I think in terms of the applicant, if you wanted to, oh, looks like Teresa's trying to jump in. No, we, we, yeah, we can't hear you, Teresa.
Teresa has, Teresa is not, she's got the same problem.
So, so let Teresa log out and log back in.
Let's just wait for her to get back before we move on.
Oh, she logged out, okay.
She's going to log back on. I also do want to just make a quick note that Esteban had noted that they received the applications just last week, fairly late in the process, and I want to clarify that, you know, that is not their fault and that we received information regarding the escrow that delayed sending the applications out to them because we wanted to be sure that that was squared away. And so that's something that I, I learned late in the process about. And that was all cleared up with the applicants. And moving forward, we've adjusted the process as of today to ensure that the escrow is handled and addressed earlier in the process and that I'm, I'm able to get that information as applicants, as applications come in.
The new deadline, so the boards are aware, is now three weeks ahead of the meeting and the escrow and the fees will be taken at that three-week point, which means that there will be escrow right off the bat, so consultants can get started right away on writing their memos. And then memos should be due the Friday before the Wednesday meeting.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Of us to review things over the weekend. Right, excellent, okay.
Yeah, Kathy, can we ask for the resolution to be prepared since?
But if I didn't make myself clear, I will make myself clear. Can we have a resolution prepared for our next meeting, please? Circulate for review before the meeting. Thank you.
I, I think Teresa is still having problems, so she's, it's like she dropped off in a login again, so maybe we'll, we'll get her.
All right, well, we'll hear from her if she has any, if she has any clarification of what the zoning special permit, that that is something for the zoning board. It doesn't impact what we're doing. So it doesn't seem like it's impacting what we're doing, so we can move forward. Okay. All righty.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and welcome to Marinerneck. I mean, we're going to remember you're up first thing. Okay, that brings us to this item on the agenda. Application for addition at 1040 Nautilus Lane, which happens to be directly behind the address we were just talking about. So let's take off the Nine Acres Lane people and put on the Nautilus Lane people, okay.
Daniel Collins part of this as well?
I think so, with Hudson Engineering.
Okay.
I think Teresa may be with us.
I think I am. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Teresa. We, we introduced you before, but I guess we couldn't hear you and, but you could hear us, right?
Oh, I heard everything, absolutely.
Okay, this is Teresa Backner, our, our new land use attorney. She's with the firm of White, Ostrom and Hannah.
It's very nice to meet you all.
Welcome, welcome aboard, although you've been partially aboard before this, but now you're fully. Before we get started and so we don't forget, let's modify this also as a type two action. It's a residential property. It's a type two under secret. So do I have a motion to declare and classify this as type two?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I'll call the roll. Richard?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, that's done. Okay, who will be for the applicant?
I will.
Okay, hello.
Hi, my name is Liam Winters. I'm the architect for Joanna Harp and Michael Kraft, the owners of the residence since, I think, September. Okay. So I will run through this and then when I'm finished, I'll, I'll hand over to Dan, I believe it is, to take on the civil portion. Okay, how do I do this now? Can I take over the screen?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, yeah, okay.
And I will share this one. Okay, can we see this?
Yes.
Okay. Currently, this shows the new house. Well, you know what, I'm going to go to the, to the survey to start with. Okay. This is the existing site. We plan to use the exact footprint of the home with some alterations, a little bit absorbing some new space, which I'll describe. But effectively, we're reusing the entire foundation for the renovation of the house. This house is existing 2,800 square feet on a 2,022-square-foot footprint. We are going to be able to take it to a 4,400-square-foot house on a 2370-square-foot footprint. So we're, we're adding a modest amount. We're going to be starting with taking the concrete patio in the back out. The enclosed porch, which is raised up in the air, we're going to have to put a foundation on that, take that down to the ground and rebuild that as interior space. And then on the second floor above that, which we're going to be adding, that will be a deck. As you see here, this existing driveway, we're going to be reusing that, but this area right here, we're going to be absorbing that. It's, it's, there's railroad ties along here, so we're going to be absorbing that as pavement because we're going to be widening the garage here and taking out these exterior staircase. Okay? So this is the neighborhood map. And so this is the ocean, the sound over here, and this is the residence directly in front of it. And this is the site that we're working from. We are clearly nowhere, we're in a tight an X location. We're away from any flood plains, no soils of concern, wetlands, et cetera. So I'm just gonna go right into the architectural real quickly. As you can see, this is the portion of the staircase that's coming out right here in the basement level. And we're taking this retaining wall, putting it in place instead of the railroad ties. So we're adding pervious surface here. Impervious surface, excuse me. We're adding a rear deck over here at the back. It's gonna be a drip through deck over over soil. Okay, this is a split level house. When you walk into the front, it's existing main floor plan is right here. And then going the other direction, it goes down and up at the same time. This is gonna be the main living area. This is the family room below. And they have a guest room and an office down here with a mudroom. The bulk of the work is gonna be in this area. This is where the second floor is being added. Currently, it's just a slope roof. And it's gonna be the master suite with a deck over the existing screen porch right there. Roof plan is not very exciting. The front and rear elevations, this is the front. And currently, the house goes up to this level, but the second floor is set back. And the main level ends right here. So we're putting this entire space on top of it. This is what you see from the street down the driveway. These the existing elevations of the house. So you can see this is the new addition right here. The second floor here is probably about six feet, six and a half feet right here, which is too low, up to about seven and a half feet right there. So it's really kind of a an interesting house to work with. We're trying to work with the vocabulary that we have and bring it into current standards. This is from the street level. This is the screened in porch that we're turning into a sunroom or den. Building sections. So you can see how it's existing split level using the exact same levels. This is the rendering that we showed to the D A R that we're gonna be doing. So at this point, I think Dan, did you want to take over and discuss the coverage, et cetera?
Sure, I'm having difficulty getting my drawing up. Of course, it's right before the meeting. I opened it up and then I closed it. Come on. Come on.
Have the documents on file. I can.
I I have it too. If you want me to flip through it for you.
You can pull up. Yeah, if you could pull it up, that'd be great. And then go to sheet C two. Always technically, always technical difficulties right when you need it, right?
Yeah. Okay, so let me just see how I do this. Okay, make that full page. Is that C two?
Yep, there it is. Thanks. All right. So basically, the the stormwater is relatively straightforward, as it is with most single family residences. In this case, we are catching the entire roof area and actually conveying it to a subsurface exfiltration system located in the rear yard consisting of ten cult tech units. To treat the water quality, we're provided an isolated isolation row, which basically the runoff enters a catch basin first that diverts the water quality volume towards this isolation row, which actually allows a lot of the sediment to settle out before it overflows and goes into the rest of the system. The entire system as a whole is designed for the twenty-five year storm per village requirements. Obviously, we did submit the the SWIP with everything else as well. So you guys have that in front of you as well. Coverage, again, since everything's really being constructed right where the the existing building is, there's only a very slight increase. I believe we had a slight increase of about two hundred sixty-six square feet over what currently exists. We are they are removing the patio in the back. There's the deck. And they are slightly widening the the driveway. But the two areas where the building is extending out are over again, the the sunroom is in an area where there was already a structure. And the stairs on the left side where they're extending into that area, obviously, it's already a covered stairway and stairwell that's impervious as it is. So it's only a very slight increase from that end. All right. Outside of that, I think everything else is pretty straightforward.
Do you know what the overall coverage of the site is?
You're welcome. Percentage was. Let's see. Hold on one second. So I got total existing right now, it is two over total existing now is twenty-two point oh five percent. Proposed is three ninety-seven. Sixteen eighty-seven is twenty-three point six three percent.
So from twenty-two to twenty-three?
Yeah. Very, very slight.
Where's Esteban? Do you have any comments on this? And can you verify that your report on this project is also in progress?
Yes, my report's also in progress. Just one quick question. That Daniel, how you are you going to? The the how do you handle the overflow past a twenty-five year storm? I just see here.
Right now, I think it was right now, I think it was going to back up out of the N D S and it was gonna flow over land. That if we if we can provide something else, that's not a big difference. That's not a big deal.
Oh, no, cuz I'm just seeing here catch catch basin with a solid cover. So I'm not sure if you're gonna provide a greater, it's just gonna be a solid cover. So that's where I didn't.
So on the on the on the planning board application, it says proposed gross for area twenty-eight seventy, existing gross floor area forty-five twenty-five. Is that?
That that's that should be reversed, excuse me.
Those are just reversed. Okay, that's what I figured.
Yep. So we completely understand why we had to do this, but we're going from probably non-functioning rainwater leaders at sixty-five years old to full coverage of the entire house at this point. So that's a massive upgrade
Yeah.
to the site. With almost, you know, less than two hundred increase in coverage.
Huge improvement.
Does anybody have any questions about the engineering? We don't have the benefit, obviously, of our consulting engineers report. So usually, we have a little bit more information in front of us.
We also have a a landscape plan.
Yes. Finish that. Yes. And there was some back and forth and some changes made even today.
Yes.
My first reaction is you threw the baby out with the bathwater. But I'd like to I'd like to fully understand what you're now proposing. And I believe you're removing trees and that has to be noted. The the trees that you're that you're proposing to remove.
Okay, Marcia, are you on?
She's on.
Yeah, she looks like she's muted.
She looks like she's muted. Okay, then she needs to raise her hand, I guess. There she is.
Okay, Marcia, there's your latest plan, I believe. Is that correct?
This is the one we got today?
Yes.
So am I showing up? Yes.
It's got a lot fewer plants than the original plan.
Well, I think there were some budget issues, if I'm not mistaken. I don't know if Joanna and Michael want to talk about that, but when we reviewed the.
That's the if that's the reason, you know, okay, but all right. Because there was a question about using non-native plants. And then when it came back with more native plants, it had just a lot fewer. So, all right.
Right. We reduced the all of the existing planting areas in the back. We decided to take those out because they were putting them over budget. And they wanted to just have plants around the house for the time being.
So could you highlight the? And I I can't, this just came today. And unfortunately, I didn't.
This back area here, I'm not sure if I.
Moving at least two existing trees, if I remember from the.
It's they're really not. One of them is quite dead already. There's a big hole in the trunk. And the other one is really not a tree. It's a holly that's sort of become a tree and it's right next to the house. Those are the only two. There's really no trees being removed of any substance.
What's the, there's an X through a circle. Ten, looks like ten something T. What what is that? So is that the tree that's being removed?
The one that's up in the back?
Yes.
Near the near the patio that's being removed? Yes, that's.
Oh, yeah, off to the move the cursor off to the right.
Very unhealthy tree. It's really.
Yeah, the one, yeah, tree. Okay, Z's, okay. And there's nothing similar. It's mostly shrubbery around the house as opposed to.
There are river birches going in and then a blood good maple on the front. But the the one in the back is a dogwood and it's it's just, it's not worth saving. That's the only reason it's coming out. If it was healthy, it would stay.
But it's fairly substantial in size. Is that right?
Yes, it was at one time. It's really not. There's not much left of the tree. There's a trunk and then a few branches.
If it's needed, I have the pictures of the existing house. If you don't look at it.
And there was a question, I guess, some Susan Oakley is here. I think she raised the question that she went out onto Google Maps and it looked like there used to be more trees there. And the the answer to that question was that they were possibly damaged in a storm before the current owners bought the house. And you submitted the photographs, aerial photographs from the sale listing showing the condition the way it is now. Just for anybody else that might have done that and looked at that, we have an answer to that question. Okay, well, I mean, obviously, this just came in today and our our landscape architect consultant, Susan Oakley, will take a look at it with us. And our engineering consultant will get us his report on the stormwater management. Does anybody have any other questions for the applicant? Other than other than those things, it's pretty straightforward. And you've been to B A R?
Yes, we have.
Okay, can someone I explain to who by B A R or go back for final approval?
Who is approved?
They've been approved. Okay. All right. Nobody has any other questions?
I I have a quick question. And I I'm Michael. I'm the the homeowner. You know, we we on the landscaping plan, we didn't know if there were sort of firm guidelines on the number of native plants. So that was part of it also. We were just sort of, I I don't know if the if the village has sort of guidelines on percentage species or if it's a little if there's anything that we could use to help guide us on that front.
Well, Susan can answer that. But I I think what we're seeing, at least what I feel I'm seeing, I've been on the planning board now for two years, three years. I can't remember anymore. We're both together, is that especially people who live on the sound like you do, close to the sound, they're opting more for native plants that provide shelter and food sources for the birds, especially migrating birds and whatnot, because you are in a flyway. And so we're starting to see things like service berries and, you know, we're starting to we're starting to see robust native plantings. People are a little bit more ecologically aware than they were years ago. So we're not really, I don't think there's any hard and fast rules. My own personal experience, I have a lot of native plants in my yard. And my native plant guru who takes care of my yard for me says you can't have all native plants. It just won't work. You have to have a smattering of a lot of things. So that's the best I can do for you.
Okay, thank you. That's.
If you wanted to look at some projects that were just approved and look and see what other people have done, I don't know how else to tell you. Since you're new here, you probably haven't been watching planning board meetings. So you can see what other people have.
Oh, we we see other people that are sort of all over the place when we drive through the neighborhood. So it's hard to take a steer from existing houses because they're.
And even if and even if you looked at something you like, you probably wouldn't have any idea what it was.
Exactly. We're coming from the the city in an apartment. We know nothing about landscaping to be honest.
And I don't I don't I don't even know the name of the plants in my own yard.
Wherever I could, I used native plants and substituted very similar, I very similar plants. That was the modus operandi that I used when I did this. If I had a my burnum, I picked a native rather than a non-native. I mean, that's kind of what I did. I just substituted a native type of hydrangea for the non-native hydrangeas. So that that was really the the thinking behind it. So I really changed and changed the idea of the plan. I just swapped to the native version.
Right, right.
I I wasn't sure about the comment in the email about the the local annuals and the flower beds. Are you with the native plants including annuals?
Not what we ended up doing. I put liriope in there instead because they wanted something very easy maintenance that they didn't need to touch. And I put liriope, which is not native, but it's it's still a very easy care plant. So then I did not leave room for the annuals, actually.
Okay. I I had that question.
Yeah, cuz annuals have to be put in every year. So that's.
Yeah, I'm not sure annual would qualify. Yeah.
So that's that's that's, yeah, that's.
Susan, you have comments?
Well, I also wanted to add that when, you know, I've been leaning more towards native plants in my recommendations to the board for all the reasons you mentioned. But in addition to those benefits benefits to wildlife and pollinators, it also native plants require less. native plants require less maintenance and water, supplemental water, and soil amendment, and fertilizer. So all those things cumulatively add up to a better environmental and better for, for humans and plants and the environment, so that's, that's what I've been leaning towards in my recommendations. And again, they're always just recommendations to the board, and the board can move ahead with the applicant in the way they feel most comfortable.
Thank you, Susan, but we like your recommendations. All right. Okay, so where are we now? I think we have an understanding of the project. We have an understanding of where you are. We do need to review this revised landscape plan in the, in the SWIP and move forward from there. Anybody else? Did I miss anything? Can, I don't think we need the screen share, I need to see face instead. Thanks. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, I'm turning to Ashley and Amber. Are we, we're all on the same page here? Yes?
Yes.
Yes, yes, everybody, everybody, applicants understand where we are. I don't see this as, I mean, hopefully, we'll get turnaround, and we might even be able to get on the agenda for the next meeting, depending on where things stand. Okay, all right, thank you very much, and welcome to Maric. When you finish your-
I'm sorry, I, sorry.
We're a little confused.
Sorry, we're confused on final decision.
We still need to look at, especially since we just got the revised landscape plan today, so our landscape consultant will look at it and give us a report. Our consulting engineer will finalize his report and get it to us. So without those two things, we cannot make a final decision. Okay? Once we have all of that, then we can, I mean, I don't think anybody's leaning towards anything negative. We just have to go through the process, and hopefully we'll move along as quickly as we can, and if everything is okay, we'll get you on the agenda for the next meeting.
And the next meeting is when?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, okay.
Would we have to go through any of the the mailings again, or are we good for?
That's a question for the staff. I think we have to-
No more mailings. I think you might need to update the date on your sign.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, people just put like white over-
White tape on it.
We'll clarify and send that to you. And just in terms of timing, we have an agenda conference call scheduled for next Wednesday. And so at that point, the staff will discuss what we've reviewed in your application and whether or not we'll be able to put you on the 27th for a decision.
Okay.
All right. Sorry, can I, I, I understand, I understand that we don't have everything, you know, completely, completely, completely finalized, but is it, is it not sufficient information to render a decision? I, I, we just, we've gotten like pushed out like quite a lot, and it just seems like these are super small, and like we said, we're putting in these, these, this whole stormwater system. And it's, we've gone through a lot, I guess. Is, is there just any chance that it's sufficient, the information that we have?
I'm sorry, we, we do have to follow the village code. So that's kind of where we are at this point, and believe me, this is fast-tracked. There are people who have to go to other boards and make other stops, and things get, you know, stretched out. If we can get you done in two meetings, that would be terrific.
Well, I, I think the other problem is, we, we don't have a resolution. We haven't drafted, we haven't asked our attorneys to draft a resolution. And if we were to act tonight, which I'm personally not comfortable doing without two, you know, not, not, you know, the most critical information, because they're being reviewed by professionals, but important aspects of our responsibility, we would have to put so many conditions in your resolution that we would need another meeting to come up with them all. It's better to get the, the data and the information and the analysis from everybody and do it all clean at one time. I mean, maybe it's worth asking for the resolution to be drafted in anticipation that things will go smoothly. Maybe that could cut down some time, so we could-
Certainly do that. I mean, we can certainly do that. I mean, it all depends on getting the, especially the engineer's report and the, and the, I mean, I, I think we're, we moved, we moved in the right direction with the landscaping review, but again, we just got it this afternoon, so we have any management, so we got it, much less our consultant.
Well, that's why a boilerplate resolution with all the, you know, all the fine points and details and legalities. And then if we need to tweak it, we can do that the next time you come.
We can actually do it at the meeting, right?
Right, that, that could help.
We really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
We really appreciate that.
We try, we try to accommodate everybody.
Thank you.
I, I hate non-efficient things.
Well, it feels like we're 99.9, so-
But we just, you know, it just, things, you know, it's unfortunate, it's, we have to just follow certain procedures and it takes time, so, okay.
You all, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good night. And that brings us to the end of our agenda. Anybody have, I just want to clarify one thing with Ashley and Amber. You sent us a flowchart to, I, my guess is for our review and comment. We need to really discuss when you want to comment back by, or sort of what your intent was with this, because it's for site plan review, I think, it's like it's-
It's supposed to be like a quick reference guide to the way things are currently laid out in the code and how we would like the process to flow. So if you have any questions or comments on it, we will update it. We're also looking at whether or not the board wants to make any recommended zoning text changes over the next year to try to help improve the process.
Okay, so, but it wasn't, it didn't include subdivisions, because that's a completely different process than-
Right, it didn't include subdivisions, like, I can add another sheet.
Okay, okay, if anybody has any comments, then why don't you funnel them through me, so we're not sending them all to Amber, and you don't get a lot of repetitive or whatnot, but you know, say maybe by next week, by next Wednesday, does that give everybody enough time to, to review it and get me the comments, and then I'll, and I'll pass them along? How's that? Okay. Okay, we, I think, I think we already identified that the SECR classification comes before it goes anywhere else. We do that upfront, so we already have that comment. Okay, okay, very good. All right, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor? All right, everybody, thank you very much for your time, and stay safe.
You too.
Thank you. Okay, good night.